On fifteenth August nineteen ninety-eight. I will be hearing evidence in the course of this inquiry as to what occurred on that day. I shall also have the opportunity of hearing directly from some of those who suffered the sudden and shocking loss of their loved ones, their family members, and their friends, or those who suffered injury themselves. I would like to express my gratitude to all of those who are prepared to share their experiences of that day and to share an understanding of the grief, loss, and harm which they have endured, and to provide an insight into the lives of their loved ones. That evidence will comprise an important part of the inquiry's investigation. Even before I hear that evidence, though, what is publicly known already allows me to appreciate something of the magnitude of the atrocity. I know that the pain of bereavement and the trauma caused by the bombing was felt far beyond the community of OMA. Those who were killed were from Northern Ireland, the Republic of Ireland, England, and Spain. I know that those killed and injured ranged in age from those yet to be even born through babies, infants, children, and young people with their whole lives ahead of them, men and women in their prime, and those who were looking forward to a time in which they could share in the experiences of their adult children and grandchildren. I also know that the impact of this terrorist attack spread beyond the death and destruction brought to this community. The fact that such an outrageous attack took place only a few short months after the people of both Northern Ireland and the Republic of Ireland had voted so comprehensively in support of the Belfast Good Friday Agreement caused outrage and consternation across national boundaries and across continents. Condemnation was expressed by the Prime Minister of the United Kingdom and the Taoiseach of the Republic of Ireland. Other world leaders, community leaders, religious leaders, and political leaders all joined with them in expressing the unforgivable nature of what had occurred. In keeping with the sentiments expressed by the Taoiseach on that occasion, I am very pleased to note the support of the Government of Ireland for the work of this inquiry. In that regard, I would like to extend my thanks to the Director General and the Deputy Political Director of the Ireland, United Kingdom, and America's Division of the Department of Foreign Affairs within the Government of Ireland for kindly offering to attend here today. Of course, almost twenty-six years have now passed since the events of that day. However, the contact which I and members of the inquiry team have had with some of those who were directly affected by the bombing has made it plain to us that the trauma caused has been enduring and continues to have a most powerful impact. Thirty-one lives were lost, and life-changing and other serious injuries, both physical and mental, were cruelly inflicted on many others. It is right, therefore, that the interests and concerns of all of those who suffered the loss of loved ones and those who suffered injury should be at the heart of the work conducted by this inquiry. That statement is reflected in the approach which the inquiry decided to take to the appointment of those bereaved and injured individuals who wished to be designated as core participants. As part of our recognition of the importance of the inquiry to those affected by the bombing, suitably qualified and experienced staff will be available to provide assistance when giving evidence or when attending at the inquiry hearings. In keeping with this, the inquiry will adopt a trauma-informed approach in all of its contact with family members and others affected. But even with the legitimate interests of those affected by the bombing held closely in mind, the defining character of the inquiry must be its independence. It is by guiding its own path and through the application of that quality of independence that the inquiry will be able to engage in a credible fashion with the essence of its purpose, which is to establish whether there were reasonable steps which could have been taken by UK state authorities to prevent the bombing from occurring. The inquiry will undertake that task rigorously and fearlessly. It will not allow itself to be deflected from its purpose by the difficulties which may lie in its way on account of the passage of time or the volume and complexity of materials it may be asked to consider. The public nature of the inquiry's work will provide me with an opportunity to exhibit that commitment to persevere with determination. Of course, some of the evidence and materials which the inquiry will assess may be of particular sensitivity, and it may be that for reasons of national security it becomes necessary to hear some of that evidence in private or in what are known as closed sessions. If that is so, I will undertake to ensure that any evidence led in closed session is subject to the same level of rigorous scrutiny as that led in open proceedings. Insofar as it is possible to do so, I shall also ensure that any evidence heard in closed session is summarized or adjusted so that core participants and the public are aware of the central issues which the closed sessions are concerned with. I have touched already on the need for the inquiry's defining character to be its independence. The value which the inquiry attaches to its independence means that it will not be amenable to influence from any government or from any state agency. I undertake to conduct my task of chairing the work of the inquiry with an open mind. That, of course, means that I will assess the evidence which is heard both fairly and reasonably. I will do so without any preformed view or impression as to whether the atrocity could or could not have been prevented. This is of prime importance, given that so much has been written and reported about the bombing over the years which have passed. There have also, of course, been a number of other investigations, inquiries, and proceedings of one sort or another. Some of what has been written or reported has led to controversy, and various different and concerning claims have been advanced over the years. This inquiry will have the benefit of taking account of the work undertaken in some of the previous investigations and proceedings. Nevertheless, it is important to emphasize the unique aspect of this inquiry's jurisdiction and function. The work of this inquiry will comprise the first occasion on which the question of whether the bombing could have been prevented will be explored and tested within the confines of an inquisitorial judicial process which will have the ability to exercise powers of compulsion and recovery. This exercise will be undertaken in an independent and focused manner by counsel to the inquiry, and it will, I am sure, benefit from the support and cooperation of the highly experienced representatives of the core participants. The combined benefits of the process which is engaged in under the Enquiries Act of two thousand and five and the opportunity for core participants to assist the inquiry in its work will, I believe, ensure that this inquiry is able to credibly and comprehensively address its terms of reference. Having said that, I do not underestimate the scale of the task which lies ahead. That is why I have sought to emphasize the importance of the role which the core participants have to play. The cooperation and active assistance of each core participant will be a prerequisite for the successful functioning of the inquiry. I am sure that there will be a combined will to see that the light which the evidence can still shine all of these years later remains sufficient to ensure that the truth becomes clear for all to observe. Much of the work of the inquiry will be undertaken by Mr Paul Greenie, K C. He has agreed to accept the onerous and demanding task of counsel to the inquiry. His expertise and experience, as demonstrated in many similar proceedings to these, makes him a most valuable resource for me to depend upon. Today he appears with Mr John Rafferty from the Inquiry Council team. In a moment, I shall invite Mr Greenie to give an update on the work of the inquiry and the plans for the coming months. In recognition of the enduring loss caused by the atrocity which this inquiry is tasked with examining, I shall invite him to identify by name each of those who lost their lives. Once he has done so, I shall then invite all present to reflect on the individual and combined tragedy of so much loss by joining me in a minute's silence. Once Mr Greenie has completed his submissions, I will invite each of the core participant representatives to introduce themselves, to identify the family group or other party for whom they appear, and to present any short submissions or observations which they may wish to offer. Mr Greenie?
So, thank you. These are the names of those killed in the bombing. James Barker, Fernando Blasco Basalga, Geraldine Breslin, Deborah Anne Cartwright, Gareth Conway, Breida Devine, Orin Doherty, Aidan Gallagher, Esther Gibson, Mary Grimes, Olive Hawkes, Julia Hughes, Brenda Logue, Jolene Marlowe, Anne McComb, Brian McCrory, Samantha McFarland, Sean McGrath, Sean McGlocklin, Avril Monaghan and her unborn twins, Moira Monaghan, Alan Radford, Rosio Abad-Romas, Elizabeth Rush, Vida Short, Philomena Skelton, Brian White, Frederick White, Lorraine Wilson. So, we will now observe one minute's silence, as you indicated, and we invite those who are able to stand to do so during that period. So that concludes the minute's silence. In what I say next, immediately next, I will make reference to the circumstances of the bombing. And so I'll pause for a moment to allow anyone who wishes to leave the room or to switch off the live feed to do so. So those we have just named and remembered were killed as a result of events here in OMA on Saturday, the fifteenth of August of nineteen ninety-eight. That afternoon, the centre of OMA was busy with shoppers, with workers, and tourists. At two P M. that day, dissident republican terrorists drove a stolen Vauxhall Cavalier into the town. At two twenty P M., they parked the car up on Market Street, and they walked away. The vehicle contained a massive bomb. Shortly after three P M., the device was detonated, and those we have named, men, women, and children, and unborn children, were killed by the explosion. Hundreds were injured, and countless lives were changed forever. What was done that day in OMA caused the biggest single loss of life in the history of the troubles, and was, sir, as you have rightly described it, an atrocity. As you said, sir, in your introductory remarks, those that we have just remembered and their families must be at the heart of your inquiry, as must those who survived and the community of OMA more generally. A process of commemoration and personal statements early next year to mark the commencement of the inquiry's oral evidence hearings will enable us, and in particular you, sir, to learn about those killed and injured, and will place the deceased and their families and others affected by the bombing where they deserve to be, namely at the centre of your investigation. We know that you consider such a process to be vital, as do we, the inquiry team, and later in our submissions this morning, we'll say more about what we expect that process will involve. So you have invited us to provide an update on the work of the inquiry so far, and in doing so, we will deal with the topics in the following order so that everyone can follow where we are at any point in time. First, the scope of the inquiry and the connected topic of the engagement of the Republic of Ireland. Second, as we've just said, the commemorative and personal statements hearings. Third, the designation of core participants. Fourth, disclosure of the documentation needed by the inquiry to fulfill its terms of reference. Fifth, expert evidence. Sixth, the issue of special advocates that has been raised in written submissions. Seventh, support for those engaging with the inquiry. And eighth, and finally, the venue for subsequent hearings after today. First, then, scope and the engagement of the Republic of Ireland. This inquiry, as everyone knows, has emerged out of the judgment of Mr Justice Horner, as he was then, Lord Justice Horner, as he is now, on the claim for judicial review brought by Michael Gallagher, the father of Aidan, who we mentioned a moment ago. In the penultimate paragraph of his ruling on that claim, the judge said this, and I quote: "I am satisfied that grounds two, six, seven, and nine, when considered separately altogether, give rise to plausible arguments that there was a real prospect of preventing the OMA bombing. These grounds involve inter alia the consideration of terrorist activity on both sides of the border by prominent dissident terrorist republicans leading up to the OMA bomb. It will necessarily involve the scrutiny of both open and closed material obtained on both sides of the border. It is not," said the judge, "within my power to order any type of investigation to take place in the Republic of Ireland, but there is a real advantage in an Article Two compliant investigation proceeding in the Republic of Ireland simultaneously with one in Northern Ireland. Any investigation will have to look specifically at the issue of whether a more proactive campaign of disruption, especially if coordinated north and south of the border, had a real prospect of preventing the OMA bombing, and whether, without the benefit of hindsight, the potential advantages of taking a much more aggressive approach towards the suspected terrorists outweighed the potential disadvantages inherent in such an approach." End quotes. So it seems to us that two specific issues arise out of that conclusion of the judge that it's necessary for us to address at this early stage. One, is the scope of this inquiry's investigation limited to those grounds upon which the claim for judicial review succeeded, namely grounds two, six, seven, and nine? And two, what is the position so far as cooperation by the Republic of Ireland is concerned? As for the scope of your investigation, sir, some of the core participants in their written submissions have expressed a wish to be reassured that you do not consider this inquiry constrained to examine only the grounds regarded as plausible by Mr Justice Horner, and were able to provide that reassurance and to do so unequivocally. The inquiry's investigation is not limited to those grounds upon which Michael Gallagher's claim for judicial review succeeded. The purpose of your inquiry is set out in paragraph one of its terms of reference, and the purpose is stated to be this: "To investigate whether the car bomb detonated in OMA counted her own on the fifteenth of August nineteen ninety-eight, in which twenty-nine people and two unborn children were killed, could have been prevented by UK state authorities, with particular attention to the matters considered by Mr Justice Horner in the application for judicial review." End quotes. As that paragraph makes clear, the inquiry is not constrained by that which the court in the judicial review proceedings regarded as giving rise to plausible arguments about the preventability of the bombing. This inquiry's investigation will range much wider than that, as the balance of the terms of reference make clear. In short, sir, your investigation will consider all of the grounds considered by Mr Justice Horner, whether accepted or not in his ruling, and other matters too. So we regard it as important that we should read out the terms of reference so that they are publicly understood, and so that the breadth of your investigation is similarly understood. Having set out the purpose of the inquiry in the terms that we've stated, the terms of reference provide as follows under the heading "scope": "To the extent necessary to investigate issues relating to whether the OMA bombing could have been prevented by UK state authorities, the inquiry's investigations will include consideration individually and collectively of the following matters: A) As background and context to the OMA bombing, the assessment by UK state authorities of the threat posed in Northern Ireland by dissident republican terrorists from the first of December nineteen ninety-seven to the date of the OMA bombing. This shall include consideration of any change in the assessment following the Belfast Agreement on the tenth of April nineteen ninety-eight. B) The adequacy of the measures taken by UK state authorities, including the police, security forces, and intelligence and security agencies to disrupt those dissident republican terrorists who had been involved in terrorist attacks or attempted terrorist attacks or attempted terrorist attacks in the period from the 1st of December 1997 to the OMA bombing. This shall include consideration of any change in the measures used or approach taken by UK state authorities following the Belfast Agreement on the 10th of April 1998. C) The adequacy of the policies and practices of UK state authorities, including the police, security forces and intelligence and security agencies in sharing intelligence between themselves and with the authorities in the Republic of Ireland on the activities of those dissident republican terrorists who had been involved in terrorist attacks or attempted terrorist attacks in that period from the 1st of December 1997 to the OMA bombing. D) The allegation made by Norman Baxter, former senior investigating officer in the investigation into the OMA bombing, in the course of his evidence to the Northern Ireland Affairs Select Committee on the 11th of November 2009, that police investigators into previous attacks in Moira, Portadown, Bambridge and Lisbon did not have access to intelligence materials which may reasonably have enabled them to disrupt the activities of dissident republican terrorists prior to the OMA bombing. E) Information relating to dissident republican terrorist activity said to have been passed to police between June and August 1998 by an alleged British security forces agent known by the name of Kevin Fulton and whether that might reasonably have enabled UK state authorities, whether on its own or in conjunction with other information, to disrupt dissident republican terrorists engaged in the planning and preparation of the OMA bombing. F) The nature of the intelligence said to have been obtained by the UK government's communication headquarters, GCHQ, including from alleged vehicle and telephone monitoring of dissident republican terrorists involved in the planning, preparation and conduct of the OMA bombing and other earlier attacks. G) The adequacy of the analysis and handling of and response by UK state authorities to any intelligence obtained by GCHQ, including from vehicle and telephone monitoring of dissident republican terrorists involved in the planning, preparation and/or conduct of the OMA bombing and other earlier attacks. H) The extent and adequacy of steps taken by UK state authorities to track and analyse the mobile telephone usage by those suspected to be involved in dissident republican terrorist attacks before the OMA bombing and whether that might reasonably have enabled UK state authorities to disrupt dissident republican terrorists engaged in the planning, preparation and/or conduct of the OMA bombing. And just pausing for one moment, we'll have more to say about that particular paragraph, 2H, when we address the topic of expert evidence. To finish dealing with the terms of reference, I, any other matters which are relevant to whether the OMA bombing on the 15th of August 1998 could have been prevented by UK state authorities. To the extent it is relevant to the issue of preventability by UK state authorities, this may include information sharing and investigations. That is the breadth, sir, of your investigation. Those terms of reference have now been supplemented by a detailed list of issues. That list of issues was shared with core participants on the 16th of July of this year and this morning it has been published on the inquiry's website. The list of issues is too lengthy to rehearse now, but we invite anyone interested in the work of the inquiry to read that list in full. We believe that the list of issues demonstrates the inquiry's intention to leave no stern unturned in investigating whether the bombing could have been prevented by UK state authorities. But we emphasise that the list of issues is provisional in the sense that it will be kept under review so that if the investigation of some additional issue becomes necessary in order to fulfil the inquiry's terms of reference, it will be investigated. So we turn next to the connected topic of the participation of the Republic of Ireland. That topic is connected with the scope of your inquiry because investigation fully the question of whether the bombing could have been prevented by UK state authorities undoubtedly requires the assistance of the Government of Ireland. That is because it's highly likely, if not inevitable, that the state authorities within the Republic of Ireland hold evidence and/or information bearing upon the inquiry's terms of reference. Your powers as the chairman of an inquiry under the Enquiries Act 2005, the Act, and the Inquiry Rules 2006, the Rules, do not extend beyond the borders of the United Kingdom. And so, obtaining the material held by the Government of Ireland and securing access to any citizen of the Republic of Ireland that we wish to give evidence requires the cooperation of the Irish State. In order to secure that cooperation, the inquiry team has met with senior officials of the Government of Ireland on several occasions. The discussions that have taken place have been positive and during them, the Government of Ireland has expressed a strong desire to cooperate fully with the inquiry. The inquiry team is grateful to the Government of Ireland for its positive engagement with the inquiry team. The challenge is to see the engagement that has occurred to date translate into meaningful engagement with the inquiry's processes, both leading up to and during the course of the inquiry's oral evidence hearings. And sir, in describing that challenge, we emphasise that the inquiry team does not doubt that the Government of Ireland has a strong commitment to achieving that vital aim. Initial meetings between the inquiry team and senior officials of the Government of Ireland took place on the 13th of November of last year, along with the 18th of December 2023. So those are dates even before the inquiry had been formally established. The purpose of those early meetings was to begin a dialogue recognising the important role that the Irish State must play in this inquiry. A third meeting took place on the 1st of March of this year, just over a week after the date of establishment of the inquiry. The purpose of that third meeting was to enable the inquiry team to discuss the inquiry's terms of reference, which had been published on the 21st of February with the Government of Ireland, and to begin to establish ways of working that would enable the inquiry to secure the evidence and information it needed from the Republic of Ireland. Prior to this meeting, the then Taoiseach, Tóan Núiste, and Justice Minister all indicated a desire to assist the inquiry to the fullest extent possible. And those expressions of commitment were, of course, welcomed by your team, sir, and by you. At that meeting, the inquiry team relayed to the officials of the Government of Ireland that you, the chairman, regarded active participation in the inquiry by the Republic of Ireland as being important and important in the highest degree. The discussion at that meeting was wide-ranging, covering, for example, details about the terms of reference, access to materials and the provision of witness evidence. Furthermore, the inquiry team communicated to the officials an invitation by you, sir, to the Government of Ireland to apply for core participant status, a status that we will say more about in due course. On the 5th of March of this year, following on from that meeting, the solicitor to the inquiry, Tim Suter, who sits to my right, wrote to the Government of Ireland: "That letter repeated, sir, your invitation to the Government of Ireland to seek designation as a core participant in the inquiry." The letter stated, and again I quote: "The role of the Government of Ireland in the inquiry is a matter of the highest importance to the chairman. It is central to the ability of the inquiry to conduct a thorough investigation into all the issues within its terms of reference, in particular intelligence sharing about the threat posed by dissident republicans between the UK and Ireland prior to the tragic events in OMA. Moreover," the letter continued, "the chairman considers that the trust and confidence of the bereaved families in the inquiry and that of the survivors, the broader public on both sides of the Irish border and beyond, requires participation in and full cooperation by the Government of Ireland with the inquiry." The Government of Ireland replied to that letter on the 25th of April. It did so by saying this: "At the outset, let me restate the government's commitment to ensuring that there is nothing unanswered in this jurisdiction at the end of the UK inquiry. 'We will assist,' said the Government of Ireland's letter, 'the inquiry to the greatest extent possible within the law.' The letter went on to describe the invitation for another sovereign state to seek core participant status as, quotes, 'novel', and stated that that invitation would take time to consider. The letter addressed the role of the Republic of Ireland in providing documents and other evidence in this way: 'We have taken,' said the letter, 'a number of exceptional legal measures in this jurisdiction to enable cross-border cooperation in various legacy processes, including inquests, police investigations and reviews. That is a clear sign of our desire to help victims and families. We will approach the issue of being a material provider in the same positive spirit, but as you note, it will require further discussion between us.' So ended that letter. So we will return to the position of the Government of Ireland in a moment. But first, we should mention connectedly that on the 5th of June of this year, the inquiry team met with Assistant Commissioner Michael McKelgan of the National Crime and Security Intelligence Service of the AGS. As with the meeting with officials of the Government of Ireland, the discussions were focused on how to maximise the involvement and participation of the AGS in your inquiry. The invitation to the Irish State to seek core participant status was extended to the AGS and may we say that that meeting with the Assistant Commissioner was a constructive one. On the 11th of June, Mr Suter wrote to the Assistant Commissioner to thank the AGS for its positive engagement with the inquiry. An invitation was extended to that organisation, the AGS, to attend the inquiry's preliminary hearing today. A letter was sent in similar terms to the Government of Ireland on the 12th of June. Assistant Commissioner McKelgan replied on the 24th of June, dealing with a number of issues and stating that the AGS was, quotes, "keen to assist the inquiry in every way possible." The Government of Ireland replied the same day, requesting a further meeting to discuss the invitation to attend the preliminary hearing and to better understand the nature of the assistance that the inquiry was seeking and the mechanisms to facilitate working together. That meeting took place earlier this month, on the 3rd of July, when the inquiry team met with officials from the Government of Ireland's Departments of Justice and Foreign Affairs. How the government's engagement with the inquiry may work in practice was discussed at that meeting in general terms. As has been widely reported, at a meeting on the 9th of July, the Tóan Núiste and the Minister for Justice, Helen McKenty, secured formal approval from the Irish Cabinet for the provision of assistance to this inquiry. And following that, on the 11th of July, so two days later, the inquiry team met with officials of the Government of Ireland. Sir, as you have identified in your introductory remarks, senior official representatives of the Irish State have attended today's preliminary hearing. They are Rory de Burca, as you said, sir, the Director General of the Ireland-UK and Americas Division at the Department of Foreign Affairs, and Robert Jackson, the Deputy Political Director of the same division. And sir, they are seated immediately to your left. With your agreement, Rory de Burca will make a public statement later in the proceedings, by which I mean the proceedings today. Mr de Burca has hopefully provided a draft of what he proposes to say to you, to the families, to the survivors and to the public more generally. We have read that with care. We welcome the commitments that are to be made by Mr de Burca in that statement by the Irish State, as we know you do also. We invite everyone here today, or viewing these proceedings elsewhere, to listen carefully to what is to be said today on behalf of the Government of Ireland. We consider that it is encouraging and we hope others will too. The public statement of Rory de Burca, which we'll hear later this morning, we expect, may of course generate questions on the part of core participants. If it does, that will be entirely understandable. However, it's important that we should make clear that we know, sir, that you will not expect Mr de Burca to answer questions at today's hearing. Instead, our view, and we know yours, sir, is that any such questions should be notified to the inquiry in writing within 14 days. The inquiry team will then endeavour to seek answers to relevant queries as part of its ongoing dialogue with the Government of Ireland. May we make plain that we have no wish to exclude core participants from being able to raise questions that go to this important issue of cooperation by the Irish State. But we consider, after careful reflection, that those discussions are best managed at this stage by dialogue between the inquiry and the Government of Ireland. Sir, as all will now, we hope, understand, much work has been done by the inquiry team, in particular the solicitor to the inquiry, Tim Suter, and the Secretary to the inquiry, Sam Hartley, to engage and to engage positively with the state authorities in the Republic of Ireland. The inquiry is grateful for the cooperative and constructive approach adopted by the Government of Ireland and the AGS to its discussions with them. The intention of the inquiry, may we make plain, is to ensure, with emphasis on that word, that those discussions now move into a practical phase in which clear written agreements are put in place to make certain that the inquiry has full access to any potentially relevant materials held by the state authorities in the Republic of Ireland and that it has the ability to obtain statements and core witnesses to attend the inquiry to give evidence in person. That is the inquiry's commitment to what it seeks to ensure. The core participants can be assured that the inquiry team will be monitoring progress closely and will expect meaningful progress within a reasonable timeframe. And so we will keep core participants updated as practical cooperation develops between the inquiry and the Government of Ireland. So we'll turn next to the second matter of update, that being the commemorative and personal statement hearings. As we have emphasised already, we know that you regard a As we have emphasised already, we know that you regard a process of commemorative and personal statement hearings as vital, as indeed does your team. And that is why those hearings will represent the first stage of the Inquiry's oral evidence On the 27th of June, so just over a month ago now, the Inquiry announced that the commemorative and personal statement hearings will start on Monday, the 27th of January of next year. They are expected to last for three to four weeks, and they will take place here in the Suel Arts Centre. The Inquiry's announcement explained the following, and I quote: 'The commemorative and personal statement hearings will play a key role in the Inquiry. They will allow the Chairman to receive written statements and to hear evidence directly from those most affected by the bombing. It is a voluntary process. It will ensure the families of the bereaved, those who are injured and the community of Omagh can share their experiences.' The Inquiry team hosted an information day with Wave Trauma Centre, about whom we'll have more to say shortly, here in Omagh on the 16th of July, so two weeks ago. That event provided an opportunity for those who may not otherwise know about the Inquiry or who have not engaged with it to date to meet members of the Inquiry team. We hope, moreover we believe, that those who attended the two sessions that day found the experience a valuable one. The Inquiry team is open to the prospect of a further information day, and it encourages anyone who considers that would be of value to contact Mr Suter via the Inquiry website. The web address for the Inquiry's website is https://oma.independent-inquiry.uk or alternatively, our website can be found by typing the phrase 'Oma bombing inquiry' into a search engine. Available on the Inquiry's website is an explainer document, along with a protocol that sets out how anyone who wishes to contribute to the commemorative and personal statement hearings can do so. Whilst there is no requirement to contribute, we would encourage anyone who wishes to share their experiences of the bombing to contact the Inquiry expressing their wish to do so. And may we add that we do not underestimate the courage that will require. Whilst no substitute for reading the source material available on the Inquiry's website, there are a number of basic features of the commemorative and personal statement hearings that we will set out now with the aim, we hope, of being helpful. That hearing, starting early next year, will have two purposes. The first purpose is to commemorate publicly each person who was killed in the bombing. This will take the form of pen portraits in order to explain who each person who died was in life and to recognise their individuality. It will allow family members to set out the impact of the death of their loved one. The second purpose is to hear personal statements from those who were injured in or were directly affected by the bombing, and this will recognise the wider impact of the atrocity on the community of Omagh and indeed beyond. So to deal with the mechanics of this, you have requested that family members or their legal representatives informed him Suter, the Solicitor to the Inquiry, by 4pm on the 9th of September this year of certain particulars in respect of the person that they wish to commemorate. And you have further requested that any pen portrait evidence is submitted by 4pm on the 1st of November. It's important to emphasise, as the Inquiry's announcement did, that this is intended to be an entirely voluntary process. There is no requirement or even expectation that a bereaved family should provide a pen portrait. And may we be clear that no reasons or explanation will be sought if a family chooses not to do so. It is entirely a matter for each family to decide. You, sir, have further requested that any individual wishing to provide a personal statement should inform the Solicitor to the Inquiry of their wish to do so by 4pm on the 9th of September and provide certain particulars. The Inquiry will then review all material received, and provided the witness has relevant evidence to give, will issue a written request accompanied at that stage by further guidance. You have requested, sir, that any witness who receives a written request of that type should submit their personal statement by 4pm on Friday, the 1st of November. So it is important, if we are to maintain the progress we wish to make, that that timetable should be adhered to. But the Solicitor to the Inquiry and his team will aim to assist anyone who experiences difficulties or challenges with the process or with the timetable. Next, update topic three, the designation of core participants. Rule 5.1 of the rules that we have mentioned already provides that you, Chairman, may designate a person as a core participant at any time during the course of the Inquiry, provided that person consents to being so designated. Rule 5.2 provides that in deciding whether to designate a person as a core participant, you must in particular consider whether (a) the person played or may have played a direct and significant role in relation to the matters to which the Inquiry relates;[1027.11][1027.11](b) the person has a significant interest in an important aspect of the matters to which the Inquiry relates; or (c) the person may be subject to explicit or significant criticism during the Inquiry proceedings or in the report or in any interim report. You must, of course, act fairly at all times, but, sir, the procedure and conduct of the Inquiry is a matter for you to decide. You have a wide discretion to decide who to designate as a core participant, and furthermore, and importantly, irrespective of whether someone is a core participant, they may still be a witness to the Inquiry and will, if that is the case, be supported by the Inquiry team to enable them to participate fully in that capacity as witness in the evidential On the 26th of February of this year, the Inquiry published its Protocol on Applications for Core Participant Status. The Protocol involved a process of applications with the ability of unsuccessful applicants to renew, followed by a final determination by you, sir. The Inquiry received, as was to be expected, a number of applications for core participant status. In determining each application, you followed the procedure set out in the Protocol that had been published and had regard to the factors in Rule 5.2 in exercising your discretion whether to designate that applicant. In the results, some applications were successful and some were unsuccessful. The Inquiry has published lists of those falling into each category on its website. Of those applicants who were unsuccessful, one has applied for leave to apply for judicial review. That is Peter Keely, also known as Kevin Fulton, to whom we made reference earlier when dealing with the Terms of Reference. You, sir, oppose his application for judicial review. Mr Justice Humphries has given directions, and those directions include that matter being listed for what is known as a rolled-up hearing on the 3rd of September this year. And so we will say no more about that application at this stage. Finally, under this heading that deals with core participant designation, you have made several awards pursuant to Section 40 of the Act for certain core participants to have legal representation at the public expense. Those awards are managed in accordance with the Inquiry's cost protocol, and that protocol, along with the other protocols that we have mentioned already, is available on the Inquiry's So we consider that's all we need to say at this hearing about the designation of core participants. We'll turn next to the issue of disclosure, so topic four. By disclosure, a term that is familiar to all lawyers but perhaps not to every member of the public. By disclosure, we mean the process by which the Inquiry ensures that it receives all of the documentation that it needs to fulfil its Terms of Reference, including material which is regarded as sensitive on national security or other public interest grounds, which is sometimes described as closed material. Rule nine of the rules provides that (1) the Chairman of an Inquiry must send a written request for a written statement to any person from whom he proposes to take evidence;[1276.15][1276.15](2) the Chairman must send a written request to any person that he wishes to produce any document or any other thing;[1285.33][1285.33](3) the Chairman may make a written request for further evidence, being either a written statement or evidence; and (4) any request for a written statement must include a description of the matters or issues to be covered in that statement. So it's important to emphasise that you have powers to enforce such requests, and we know that you will not hesitate to utilise those powers if that proves to be necessary. To date, sir, you have issued Rule nine requests for evidence and information to a significant number of organisations. So we'll summarise the effect of those requests in fairly short order, in the order in which those requests were made, in a moment. Before we do so, it's important to emphasise that they represent initial, with that word underlined, initial requests. The majority of the requests made to date have been focused on ensuring that potentially relevant materials are identified, catalogued and preserved. More detailed Rule nine requests posing questions with greater specificity will be issued as the Inquiry's work develops. It's likely that this will include requests for organisations to provide corporate statements on key issues and to exhibit materials. We should emphasise that the challenge of identifying, reviewing and disclosing relevant materials is significant. The Inquiry team expects all organisations and individuals who receive Rule nine requests to recognise that reality, and we expect all to adopt a cooperative, constructive and focused approach to the provision of materials to the Inquiry. And frankly, nothing less, sir, will be acceptable to you or your team. All of those requested to provide information to the Inquiry, in particular UK state organisations and agencies, must ensure that they are properly resourced to carry out searches for materials and that they meet the deadlines set by the Inquiry. So your team will not hesitate to invite you to use your statutory powers to require the production of materials where that is thought to be necessary and explain publicly any issues that arise associated with the Inquiry's efforts to secure any such materials. So we turn then to the requests that have been made to date under Rule nine. They include requests of the following organisations. The Police Service of Northern Ireland, so PSNI, and as I indicated, I'm going to deal with these requests not in order of importance but in the order in which they were delivered to the relevant organisations. PSNI was issued with a Rule nine request on the 21st of March of this year. It was asked to search and catalogue materials that may touch on the scope of the Terms of Reference. Detailed questions were also asked for searches to be undertaken to locate the RUC threat book for Omagh. We have also subsequently requested access to any materials from the claim for judicial review brought by Michael Gallagher, reports into the Omagh bombing criminal investigation and the report or reports on cell site analysis prepared by Lisa Purnell. Your team, sir, has been assisted by a number of meetings between officers and representatives of PSNI and the Inquiry's secretary, deputy secretary and solicitor. This has included two meetings at PSNI headquarters, those taking place on the 25th of March and the 19th of June of this year, which meetings were used to discuss ways of working and further meetings to inspect some materials on site. PSNI committed in those meetings to work constructively and positively with the Inquiry and to ensure that adequate resource is committed to respond to the requests that are made. In written submissions that it has prepared and served, sir, on you for the purposes of today's hearing, PSNI has explained the dedicated team of police officers, none of whom we're told was involved in earlier investigations or proceedings, and lawyers that it has put together in order to service the work of the Inquiry. PSNI has explained the phases of its intended work and the challenges it faces or perceives that it faces. So your team will work with PSNI with a view to ensuring that those challenges do not delay the important work of this Inquiry. PSNI has now provided its first index of materials to the Inquiry. This involved reviewing and indexing 24 files of non-sensitive materials compiled during the judicial review proceedings to which we've referred on a number of occasions. A 68-page index of materials has been supplied to the Inquiry, and that represents Phase One of four phases of work that PSNI intends to undertake. Phase Two, which involves a review of the material held in relation to the criminal investigation to the bombing, has commenced. Much of the material sadly is held in hard copy, and we're told it comprises about 230,000 pages. We recognise that Phase Two represents a substantial undertaking by PSNI. However, we believe that PSNI understands and acknowledges that its work on this and other phases must be properly resourced so that the work of the Inquiry is not delayed. The Inquiry team's engagement with PSNI has been positive, and we aim to ensure that it continues in that spirit. The Office of the Police Ombudsman of Northern Ireland, Pony, was issued with a Rule nine request on the 25th of March. The Ombudsman was asked to search and catalogue materials that may touch on the Inquiry's Terms of Reference. Pony notified the Inquiry on the 8th of May that it had prepared an index of the materials it holds. We have, may we say, been greatly assisted in our work by regular liaison with Pony, and the Inquiry thanks Pony for its positive engagement with the Inquiry. The secretary and solicitor to the Inquiry met with the Ombudsman in February of this year, and the Inquiry has been granted access to review materials held by Pony. The Inquiry has found this, in short, to be a cooperative and constructive way to work. In its submission, its written submission, for the purposes of today's hearing, the Ombudsman has repeated the commitment to support the work of the Inquiry to, as it was put, the fullest extent possible, and so we know that you will welcome that commitment. So may I just pause for one moment? So I'm going to deal with the next two Rule nine requests that have been made, and then for the benefit of the short-hand writer, I'm going to request a short break. and then for the benefit of the shorthand writer, I'm going to request a short break. Merseyside Police was issued with a Rule Nine request on the 26th of March. This was a targeted Rule Nine request designed to request a copy of the report and any underlying materials prepared by Deputy Chief Constable Mick Tong, all which he had access to. Deputy Chief Constable Tong was appointed by the Northern Ireland Policing Board in May of 2002 to provide a report in relation to the then-current state of the police investigation into the OMA bombing. Merseyside Police provided a substantive response on the 30th of April, and arrangements have now been made to review the materials held. The Inquiry is grateful to Merseyside Police for its prompt response. The Ministry of Defence was issued with a Rule Nine request on the 28th of March. That department was asked to search and catalogue materials that may touch on the scope of the Inquiry's terms of reference. The Inquiry team was assisted in drafting that Rule Nine request by a meeting with the Ministry of Defence in London and the Inquiry secretary and solicitor, which took place on the 10th of March. In the Rule Nine request, the Ministry of Defence was asked to identify the following: A) Materials relating to any military deployments to dissident republican terrorist attacks between December 1997 and August 1998; B) The location of fixed military checkpoints, sangars and other observation posts on the Northern Ireland border, in County Tyrone and around OMA between December 1997 and August 1998; C) Any briefings or reports that were prepared into the OMA bombing; and D) Any materials relating to the OMA threat book said to be used by the RUC. After issuing that Rule Nine request, the Inquiry secretary and solicitor also had the opportunity to meet with an official who leads on the archiving and legacy materials held by HQ 38 Brigade in Northern Ireland. The secretary and solicitor of the Inquiry had that meeting in Lisbon on the 29th of April of this year. The meeting took place on the day of the official's retirement from the Ministry of Defence and was designed to share his knowledge of the archives before he left his post, and the Inquiry is grateful for that assistance. The Ministry of Defence provided a substantive response to the Rule Nine request on the 28th of June, and the Inquiry is currently reviewing the indices that were provided. Some of the department's material has been digitised, but it's clear that the Inquiry will need to undertake further work with the Ministry of Defence to identify reasonable steps to identify key materials that it holds. So, sir, as you will appreciate, there is a note being taken by a shorthand writer of what I am saying. That is rather more difficult when it's just one person speaking than when there is interaction between a witness and counsel, and I'm asked if we could have a short break of no more than 15 minutes at this stage, please.
We shall do that.
So, thank you. I'm going to return in a moment to deal with the balance of the Rule 9 requests that have been issued by the inquiry. But first, I'm going to return to nearly where I started. And that's because Mr. Rafferty spotted that when I dealt with the final paragraph of your terms of reference, I missed out some words. And the words that I missed out are important ones, and so I wish to put that right. The final paragraph of the Terms of Reference in full reads as follows: "Any other matters which are relevant to whether the OMA bombing on the 15th of August 1998 could have been prevented by UK state authorities. To the extent it is relevant to the issue of preventability by UK state authorities, this may include information sharing and investigations with and by state authorities." And then these are the words I missed out in the Republic of Ireland. So, having put that right, I will continue with the Rule 9 requests that have been issued.
Thank you.
The Northern Ireland Office, the NIO, was issued with a Rule 9 request on the 28th of March. As with all key material providers, the inquiry secretary and solicitor met with the NIO on the 20th of March in order to discuss the likely contents of that request, how the inquiry would work, and what our expectations are. Like many organisations, the NIO was asked to search and catalogue what it holds for materials that may touch on the scope of the inquiry's Terms of Reference. In addition, the Northern Ireland Office was asked to provide (a) all the materials from the successful claim for judicial review of Michael Gallagher, including not only all open but all closed materials. And by that, as we've indicated already, we mean all materials which are regarded as sensitive on national security or other public interest grounds. So, the request is not just for the open material but also for any closed material held by the NIO. (b) Any materials relating to documents, correspondence, or other materials raised by bereaved families or survivors about missed opportunities to prevent the bombing. (c) Any materials relating to the security situation and threat levels in Northern Ireland between the 1st of December 1997 up to the Belfast Good Friday Agreement and on to the 15th of August 1998. And (d) any material held about the OMA threat book used by the IUC to record threats to public safety. A further Rule 9 request was issued to the NIO on the 9th of May requesting disclosure of the Bridger dossier. And on the 12th of June and the 4th of July, the NIO then sent to the inquiry a number of schedules listing requested materials. The closed materials from the judicial review proceedings to which we've made reference were provided to the inquiry in mid-June of this year. Counter-terrorism policing headquarters, CTP HQ, was issued with a Rule 9 request on the 3rd of April. That request was drafted for dissemination to the counter-terrorism policing network in the UK to ensure that any material held by the network touching on our Terms of Reference was identified, catalogued, and preserved for the inquiry, and that checks were made for the OMA threat book. CTP HQ was also asked to identify any material held by the National Bomb Data Centre for bomb attacks in Northern Ireland from late 1997 until August 1998. CTP HQ has confirmed that it has conducted searches and that neither it nor the wider counter-terrorism policing network hold any information about the OMA threat book or any reports into the OMA bombing. An index has been prepared of information held by the National Bomb Data Centre. The inquiry has met with CTP HQ representatives in order to discuss that work. Next, GCHQ, MI5 and MI6, which we will refer to collectively as UKIC, the United Kingdom Intelligence Community. UKIC was issued with a Rule 9 request on the 23rd of April. Members of the inquiry team have also had the opportunity to meet with representatives of UKIC on a number of occasions. As with other organisations, in its Rule 9 request, UKIC was asked to search and catalogue materials that may touch on Sir your inquiry's Terms of Reference. We have been assisted by meetings with representatives from UKIC and members of the inquiry team have had the opportunity to review some of the closed materials held by those organisations. Plainly, at this stage, we are unable to go into any detail about that material, but we are grateful for the cooperation and assistance we have received from UKIC. They have acknowledged directly to the inquiry team the importance of the work of your inquiry, and that approach has been in evidence in the nature and level of engagement that we have received to date. In its written submissions for today's hearing, His Majesty's Government, which represents the interests of UKIC, the NIO, the MOD, and the FCDO, to which we'll turn in a moment, in those written submissions, His Majesty's Government has stated that it quotes "looks forward to working with the inquiry in order to provide the inquiry with the necessary documents. We, in turn, look forward to ensuring that occurs." The Investigatory Powers Commissioner's Office, IPCO, was issued with a Rule 9 request on the 23rd of April, and an initial meeting was subsequently held with members of the inquiry legal team to discuss that request. As with other organisations, as everyone will now appreciate, IPCO was asked to search and catalogue materials that may touch on the scope of the inquiry's Terms of Reference. IPCO's Rule 9 request specifically asked for any materials held in respect of the work of Sir Peter Gibson relating to his 16th of January 2009 report entitled "Review of Intercepted Intelligence in Relation to the OMA Bombing of the 15th of August 1998". An initial index of materials has been received from IPCO, and a meeting is being arranged to discuss the response and for members of the inquiry team to conduct an initial review of the material that has been identified pursuant to the searches that IPCO has carried out. Next, the CAIN archive. As most, if not all, will know, the CAIN archive is a publicly available website with a collection of information and source material on the troubles and politics within Northern Ireland. CAIN was issued with a request for information on the 23rd of April to ensure that the inquiry is made aware of any material held by CAIN but which is not available on its website. The director of CAIN replied the next day, as a result of which we understand that any material relating to the OMA bombing is available on the CAIN website, and that material is being reviewed for relevance by the inquiry team. The Intelligence and Security Committee of Parliament, the ISC, was issued with a Rule 9 request on the 26th of April. As a matter of strict law and procedure, the ISC is not a parliamentary select committee but is a Committee of Parliament created by the Intelligence Services Act of 1994. It oversees the policies expenditure, administration, and operations of MI5, MI6, GCHQ, and Defence Intelligence. As with other organisations, the ISC was asked to search and catalogue materials that may touch upon the scope of the inquiry's Terms of Reference. The ISC's Rule 9 request specifically asked for any materials held by the committee relating to (a) investigations by the ISC into the methods, techniques, and policies used by UKIC to manage, monitor, and disseminate intelligence in relation to the security situation and threat levels in Northern Ireland between December 1997 and August 1998, and (b) the terrorist attacks that took place in Northern Ireland from late 1997 to August 1998. Representatives of the ISC replied to that request on the 22nd of May. They did so to indicate that it is highly likely that the committee holds material within the scope of the request but that further checks needed to be made. An indication was given that material held may be closed, so that is to say, sensitive. Because the ISC is made up of members of parliament, that work has been delayed by the UK general election. A written update was received on the 12th of July. The ISC has not yet been reconstituted following the general election, but it's anticipated that a substantive response will be provided to the inquiry by the ISC's representatives in August, so that is to say, the coming month. The Cabinet Office supports the UK Prime Minister in running government. The Cabinet Office was issued with a Rule 9 request on the 29th of April. In advance of that, a meeting was held between the inquiry secretary, inquiry solicitor, and officials of the Cabinet Office. As with other organisations, the Cabinet Office was asked to search and catalogue materials that may touch on the scope of the Terms of Reference of the inquiry. The Cabinet Office was also asked to identify potentially relevant materials, namely (a) material from the Joint Intelligence Organisation, including the Joint Intelligence Committee;[1534.44][1534.44](b) material relating to the security situation and threat levels in Northern Ireland from December 1997 to August 1998, taking into account the Belfast Good Friday Agreement; and (c) it was made clear that this material was to include briefings to or statements made by the Cabinet Office, Cabinet Ministers, or the Prime Minister on the security situation and threat levels in Northern Ireland during that period. So, we have received an initial index of materials from the Cabinet Office, and a further response is expected. A meeting is being arranged by your team with the Cabinet Office in order to discuss the outcome of the searches that have been undertaken. I referred a short time ago to the FCDO, the Foreign Commonwealth and Development Office. The FCDO was issued with a Rule 9 request on the 30th of April. Along with other organisations, many of them, it was asked to search and catalogue materials that may touch on the scope of the inquiry's Terms of Reference. The FCDO was also asked to identify materials relating to (a) discussions, correspondence, and other engagement between the UK state and the Republic of Ireland about the security situation in Northern Ireland in the six months before the Belfast Good Friday Agreement and up to the 15th of August 1998; (b) discussions, correspondence, and other engagement between the UK state and the Republic of Ireland about cross-border policing and intelligence gathering on dissident republican terrorists; and (c) discussions, correspondence, and other engagement between the UK and Republic of Ireland about the OMA bombing. The inquiry has received an initial index of materials from the FCDO, and a meeting has been held to discuss the outcome of the searches and to review the potentially responsive material that has been identified by the FCDO to date. His Majesty's Inspector or Inspectorate of Constabulary and Fire and Rescue Services, HMICFRS, was issued with a Rule 9 request on the 17th of May. It too was asked to search and catalogue materials that may touch on the Terms of Reference. Furthermore, the Rule 9 request provided to HMICFRS specifically asked for the following: (a) any materials held relating to HMICFRS reports about the OMA bombing police investigation prepared by Sir Dan Crumpton in October 2002 and David Blakey in May 2003; (b) any materials about the methods, techniques, and policies used by PSNI and/or the IUC to manage, monitor, and disseminate intelligence between December 1997 and August 1998; and (c) any materials about intelligence gathered or investigations carried out on the terrorist attacks that took place in Northern Ireland from late 1997 to August 1998. An initial schedule was provided by HMICFRS on the 20th of June. This represented the material that had been identified, reviewed, and preserved to that date that may be responsive to the Rule 9 request that had been served. It's understood, following a further update received on the 8th of July, that since the receipt of that schedule, HMICFRS... the receipt of that schedule, HMICFRS has now identified the reports of Sir Dan Crumpton and David Blakely and is continuing to review additional material that may be responsive to the Rule Nine requests. There have been a number of discussions, sir, between your team and a representative of HMICFRS, and a substantive response and index of any materials identified is awaited. The Policing Board of Northern Ireland, PBNI, was issued with a Rule Nine request on the twenty-eighth of May. It was also asked to search and catalogue materials that may touch on the scope of the terms of reference. Its letter was in similar terms to the request served to HMICFRS, the broad terms of which I set out a few moments ago. A response was received from PBNI on the nineteenth of June, along with a schedule of documents that have been identified by that body as potentially responsive to the Rule Nine request, as well as specific documents that have been requested pursuant to that request. Arrangements have now been made for members of the Inquiry team to review the materials referred to in the schedule during the month of August. And so finally, in relation to Rule Nine requests, although there is still a little more to say about disclosure. Rule Nine requests were issued to the Imperial War Museum, the National Army Museum and the Lancashire Infantry Museum. Those requests were issued between the fourth and sixth of June. Those museums have been asked to provide any materials held by them touching on the scope of the Inquiry's terms of reference. The Lancashire Infantry Museum was approached because it's understood by the Inquiry that one Queen's Lancashire Regiment was based at Lysanderly Barracks prior to and on the day of the OMA bombing. A response was received from the museum on the twenty-fourth of June, addressing the format and scope of the material it holds that may be responsive to the request that had been served. And so that is under consideration, and arrangements will be made to review the material held in due course. The Imperial War Museum and the National Army Museum have been approached because both institutions hold materials relating to the troubles, a response is awaited. So sir, as I suggested a moment ago, that concludes that which it is appropriate to say at the moment about Rule Nine requests. But there are though a small number of other matters that relate to this important topic of disclosure before we move on. Section twenty-one of the Act empowers you as Chairman to compel the production of evidence by the issue of a notice, that is one of the suite of powers available to you that we mentioned earlier. On the twenty-third of April this year, you issued a section twenty-one notice to the BBC requiring that broadcaster to provide to the Inquiry two Panorama broadcast programmes: Panorama 'Who Bombed OMA', which aired on the ninth of October of two thousand; and Panorama 'OMA: What the Police Were Never Told', which we understand aired on the fifteenth of September of two thousand and eight. Many here will be very familiar with those broadcasts. Those programmes were provided to the Inquiry in response to the notice on the twenty-ninth of April. Furthermore, on the twenty-sixth of June, you, sir, issued a request to the BBC to provide to the Inquiry the footage for a Spotlight documentary broadcast in March two thousand and twenty-three. A man named David Rupert has asserted publicly that he was an agent working for the FBI and MI5. He gave evidence as a prosecution witness in the two thousand and three trial of Michael McKevitt, and his evidence was relied upon heavily, so it seems to us by the claimants in what we'll describe as the Breslin case. The Spotlight documentary focused on David Rupert's involvement with the real IRA and his purported role as an MI5 and FBI agent during the nineteen nineties and more specifically during the period of and following the peace process. A response from the BBC is expected by the nineteenth of August. At present, the request that has been made, sir, on your behalf, has not been issued as a formal section twenty-one notice, but we have no doubt that you will not hesitate to use that power if that is what is required to secure that material. Finally, on substantive disclosure, as opposed to procedural issues that we'll deal with at the final end of this section, the Inquiry Secretary and Solicitor met with the Clerk to the Northern Ireland Affairs Committee, NIAC, and Speakers' Council on the nineteenth of April, that's the nineteenth of April of this year. The purpose of that meeting was to discuss what material NIAC holds that is not publicly available relating to its investigations into the OMA bombing, particularly the evidence provided by Norman Baxter, former senior investigating officer into the investigation into the bombing, provided to a session of NIAC on, as we understand it, the eleventh of November two thousand and nine. There are particular complexities involved in obtaining evidence from a parliamentary select committee such as NIAC. The Convention of Parliamentary Privilege, as a matter of law, means that evidence cannot be called in an inquiry or indeed in any other legal process that questions the evidence given to a select committee, because to do so, sir, would be a breach of Article Nine of the Bill of Rights of sixteen eighty-eight. The starting point is therefore with the agreement of Speakers' Council to identify the evidence held by NIAC and ascertain whether that is available or can be obtained from other sources. But as with some other evidence, this work has been delayed by the UK general election, and further inquiries are now being undertaken. So finally, under this heading, this fourth update topic, and before turning to the issue of expert evidence, we propose to explain just a little about the mechanics by which the Inquiry will manage disclosure, given that we expect to receive a very large volume of material, and also how we propose to manage disclosure on from the Inquiry to core participants so that they can play the role that they wish to and that we wish them to play. The Inquiry is finalising a procurement exercise for an electronic disclosure database. The database that will be used is called Relativity. It's a database that has been used successfully by other inquiries, indeed many other inquiries. The company that will provide that database will be confirmed as soon as possible, but it's likely that the database will be available to the Inquiry next month, August. Once the database has been set up, the Inquiry will begin to request organisations, in receipt of Rule Nine requests, to provide digital copies of potentially relevant materials to the Inquiry so that they can be uploaded to the database. The Inquiry will expect all materials to be provided unredacted, so without editing. The Inquiry itself will then assess whether materials are relevant, and if so, will apply provisional reductions to the material. The material will then be shared back with the material provider for a further review before it's disclosed to core participants, and all involved in other inquiries will recognise that approach as being entirely conventional. The Inquiry will require all material providers to assist it with ensuring materials are digitised so that they can be provided electronically and uploaded onto the Relativity database. There will be huge problems if we are not provided with material in that way. The Inquiry will then set up a secure file transfer platform that will allow material providers to transfer scanned materials to it securely. The Relativity database that we've just described, sir, will only be able to hold materials that are open, which includes materials up to and including those holding a UK government security classification of official sensitive. Due to the nature of the Inquiry's work, it's inevitable that it will have to handle more sensitive material with higher security classifications. As a result, the Inquiry is establishing a system that will allow it to hold this more sensitive material. It isn't possible, sir, to go into more details about that in a public hearing, but what we can say is that the Inquiry team considers it is essential that they have in place robust systems to manage, review and analyse all potentially relevant materials, whatever the security classification of the material. We anticipate that the first disclosures to core participants on the Relativity database will take place in the autumn, but that will depend on the process for setting up the database and on receiving and reviewing materials. And we add that before anyone can receive access to the Relativity database, they will have to sign and return a confidentiality undertaking to the Inquiry. But again, we emphasise that that approach of requiring such undertakings to be signed is entirely conventional in proceedings of this type. Now, so before I move on, may I say that I do appreciate that it has taken me some time to deal with the topic of disclosure, but we make no apology for that because we consider that it is important for the public and for the core participants, and in particular the bereaved families and survivors, to understand the work that we have been undertaking with you, sir, and on your behalf, to ensure that we get the material that is necessary to answer the questions posed by your terms of reference. We turn next to the fifth topic, expert evidence. On the twenty-sixth of June two thousand and twenty-four, the Inquiry team provided an update to core participants, forgive me, to core participants, that set out your intention to instruct experts to provide you with assistance in a number of areas. These were the areas: one, the OMA bombing in the context of the history of the troubles and the peace process; two, the development of dissident republican terrorism with a particular focus on the period nineteen ninety-seven until nineteen ninety-eight; three, the work of the Joint Intelligence Committee; four, lawful powers available to the UK state to disrupt, monitor and arrest individuals suspected of involvement in acts of terrorism; and five, the use of cell site technology, access to billing data and other methods to analyse mobile telephone usage. The Inquiry team, and in particular Mr Suter, Mr Hartley and those working to them, has consulted widely in order to identify appropriate experts. As a result of that consultation, the following experts have been identified and moreover have now been instructed. Professor Richard English has been instructed to provide an overview report on the history of the troubles and the peace process. Professor English is Professor of Politics at Queen's University Belfast, where he is also Director of the Senator George J Mitchell Institute for Global Peace, Security and Justice. The research of Professor English focuses on the history of political violence, terrorism and nationalism, with a particular focus on Ireland and Britain. Professor English is a Fellow of the British Academy, a member of the Royal Irish Academy, a Fellow of the Royal Society of Edinburgh, a member of Academia Europea, a Fellow of the Royal Historical Society, an honorary fellow of Keeble College Oxford, a faculty affiliate at the University of Chicago and an honorary professor at the University of St Andrews. So he is the expert in the first of those five areas. Dr Jonathan F Morrison has been instructed to provide a report on the development of dissident republican terrorism with a particular focus on the period nineteen ninety-seven to nineteen ninety-eight, so the second area I've identified. Dr Morrison is the Assistant Professor in Criminology in the School of Law and Criminology at Maynuth University in Ireland. He was the founding director of the Terrorism and Extremism Research Centre at the University of East London, and Dr Morrison is also the Associate Editor of two leading academic journals in terrorism studies, Perspectives on Terrorism and Behavioural Sciences of Terrorism and Political Aggression. Dr Morrison has a particular specialism in the origins, reasons and motivations for Irish dissident republican terrorism, and is the author of The Origins of and Rise of Dissident Irish Republicanism. In relation to the third of the five areas, Professor Michael Goodman has been instructed to provide a report on the work of the Joint Intelligence Committee. Professor Goodman is a Professor of Intelligence and International Affairs and the Director of the King Centre for the Study of Intelligence. He is currently Visiting Professor at the Norwegian Intelligence School and Sciences Po in Paris. He has published widely in the field of intelligence history, including the Official History of the Joint Intelligence Committee, Volume One, From the Approach of the Second World War to the Suez Crisis, and he is the Official Historian of the Joint Intelligence Committee, the JIC. In respect of that fourth area in which expert assistance is needed, John Waddam has been instructed, he has been instructed to provide a report on the legal powers available to the UK to disrupt, monitor and arrest individuals suspected of involvement in acts of terrorism. John Waddam is currently the Human Rights Advisor to the Northern Ireland Policing Board, the Chair of the UK's National Preventative Mechanism, overseeing the systems for preventing ill treatment in detention, and a member of the Ministerial Independent Advisory Panel on Deaths in Custody. John Waddam is a qualified solicitor and was previously Director of Liberty, Executive Director of Interrights, the Centre for Legal Protection of Human Rights, General Counsel for the Equality and Human Rights Commission, and the Deputy Chair of the Independent Police Complaints Commission. May we add that in his role as a consultant for the Northern Ireland Policing Board, John Waddam has no involvement in legacy issues and has had no involvement in any previous legal proceedings related to the OMA bombing. Those four experts are, as we've made plain, now instructed, and I believe that the letters of instruction have been circulated to core participants, and Mr Suter confirms that. The Inquiry has, as will be clear to all listening, identified another area in which expert evidence, will we judge, be needed. The ability of UK state authorities to utilise the technique of cell site analysis and to interpret core data records, often called CDRs, in order to establish patterns of telephonic significance in that period from nineteen ninety-seven to nineteen ninety-eight is undoubtedly an issue of importance. Indeed, it's the focus of paragraph two H of the Terms of Reference, as we set out and emphasised as we went through the Terms of Reference, and it's the focus of a series of questions in the list of issues. Much work, sir, has been done by your team in an attempt to identify an expert or experts able to assist you in relation to this topic. That work has not yet reached its conclusion, but, sir, you can be assured, as can others listening, that once it has, the core participants will be updated. We make plain, finally, on the topic of expert evidence, that we do not regard the categories of expert evidence as closed. It is entirely possible, as the work of the Inquiry develops, that you will consider that additional experts in additional areas need to be instructed. In that regard, we have noted that in their written submissions, on behalf of the bereaved family and survivor core participants that they represent, Mr Southwark's counsel and Mr Foster suggest the instruction of, and we quote from them, 'experts who have specialist knowledge and expertise in matters such as the security services and the handling and dissemination of intelligence'. and the handling and dissemination of intelligence information." We have not discounted that suggestion and we would welcome any assistance from them or anyone that they are able to give but it is too early in our work to decide whether such an instruction is appropriate. It is however worth noting that the identification of experts in this area of intelligence is not straightforward and that is because the experience of other public inquiries and inquests has been that only former members of UKIC...